Now, I think we can move right in now that we're five minutes late. We'll move right into the regular afternoon meeting of council. A adoption and receipt of agenda items. Counselor Long, Counselor Fox. Now, we all in favor? We vote? All in favor? There's a recommendation here.
I'd like to move the recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we've had a withdrawal. Mr. Hick has withdrawn his delegation request for this week.
Okay. So can... We didn't get a second, so it doesn't go anywhere. Okay, A two... Oh, I'm sorry. Adoption of minutes?
Can I just ask a question?
Okay. Although he's not coming.
I know.
Okay. Fired away. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask, with regards to the clerk's note, the bylaw was defeated a second time because it was a tie vote. We didn't have a full council. Does that not have any impact? Because I think he just wants it to be heard by a full council.
The fact it was defeated wouldn't make a difference. The issue that may have made a difference is if he was to come forth and advise her going down a different path, perhaps for a different license, that would not be seeking reconsideration of the previous matter. It would instead be taking it in a new direction. That would then not warrant the clerk's note. The note simply brought it to council's attention so that it could be processed appropriately. If council still wanted to hear him, it would simply take a vote of council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. B, adoption of the minutes. Can we adopt Counselor Fox and seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh? And is there anything that goes into special from the table, from the chair?
Need to call the question on the minutes, and then we'll go to the closing.
Okay. Call the question on the regular afternoon council minutes. All in favor? Those opposed? And can we move into... Is there anything that... Well, I guess first motion to resolve into special closed. Counselor Fox and seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh. And Counselor Qualley, do you have anything to put on the agenda?
Yeah. Legal, please.
One legal. Counselor Long?
Property.
Sorry?
Property.
Property. Counselor Long, property?
Can you change mine to property instead of legal? I think.
Okay, I'm sure we can.
Or slash legal. I'm not sure where it fits.
Did we get that? Okay. All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Chair, just to conclude, that's for those items that were on the agenda and on the distribution list, just so we're clear. Any additions? No, we're clear. Thank you.
Clear. So can we break... Can we... Motion to move into special closed? Counselor Arneson and seconded by Counselor Fox. So we'll...
You've already had the motion.
Okay, sorry. You're a little behind. I'm maybe too far ahead. What are you doing?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay.
Nothing on table though.
Okay. So we'll move into special closed.
I'd like to reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council. First, the next item on the agenda is delegations, and we have Rhonda Driediger here, and I need to declare a conflict of interest, so I'll be stepping out until this is over. Thank you.
Okay. Angie, how do we turn this on again? Oh, I got it. So thank you very much. Welcome to the township. I'd like to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Five minutes?
Yep. Thank you. So thank you for having me today. I thank most of you I've either met before or known through family connections. I'd like to talk today just on whether or not we can reschedule the work on Seventy Second Avenue with the railway upgrade. You've been, I believe, given a PowerPoint presentation. Are we actually showing the PowerPoint? Oh, you're expecting me to do... Okay. The technically challenged, this will be fun. Oh, there we go. Oh, now I'm going to find F5. Come on, Bob, shouldn't you do this for me? Slide show. There we go. And I'll just go from the beginning. Okay. So I'm Rhonda Driediger. I'm the owner of Driediger Farms. We've been farming here for fifty, almost sixty years, at 240th and Seventy Second Quick facts about us. We have five parcels at 240th and Seventy Second. We employ approximately one hundred and ten full-time and seasonal employees. The reason I've put fifteen university students is, will become apparent. We produce strawberries, raspberries, blackberries, and blueberries harvested May to September. We have a seasonal on-farm market. It opens in mid-May, obviously, and we close end of August, beginning of September, depending on the weather. We have twenty-one thousand Facebook followers. We're very active on Instagram and Twitter. My mother actually started in nineteen seventy-two, that should say, not seventy-six. She started the Pick Your Own in B.C., which now we take for granted. And we are... We have approximately sixty thousand annual visits. We produce our own jams, syrups, fruit pies. We feature a lot of local products from local farms, and we like to find people that are just getting started in their crafts and feature them at our facility. We host a summer festival, which attracts an additional eighteen to two thousand attendees that it's in one day. And we're members of the Langley Chamber of Commerce and Circle Farm Tour. We know this of our customers. Ten percent come from the east, from Abbotsford, up-country, and from the eastern side of the valley. Thirty-five percent from Langley communities. Fifty-five percent come off of Highway One. We are very well-known in the Vancouver, Burnaby, Coquitlam area. Our clientele are decision-makers, so parents, grandparents, and descendants of long-term customers, they are also very active on social media. It's their preferred way to communicate. So why do people come to our farm? Because their parents and grandparents have always bought from us. We cater to immigrants. If you check out our website, we also advertise in Japanese, Korean, and Chinese. We're the first farm off the highway. Oh, no. Don't put that on my five minutes. We ca... Sorry. We're the first farm off the highway, and that's something we're also known for, is that we're very, very easy to get to and very easy for those people to get back on the highway. These are people that are generally don't know much about the valley, they're scared to get off the highway, they follow our signs to our place, they buy their berries, they get back on the highway, and they breathe a sigh of relief. We have a lot of U-Pick fields. It's a big part of what we do. We actually have to farm fields certain ways just to keep them around our market for U-Pick. And we're very family... Oops, sorry. We're very family-oriented. So you'd like to close my road, the only road to my market, actually directly in front of my market, from May to September. So we have a lot of negative impacts. I'm thinking I'm probably going to lose at least half a million dollars in sales. There's... And I'm sure you've seen the outline and the traffic plan. So this now creates a dead end where my market will be located. We are going to be rebooting. If we do manage to capture all of our customers, they come in approximately fifteen thousand vehicles. You're going to route those people down Rollison Crescent, down the Snake Hill on 232nd, down Rollison Crescent, and increase the traffic on 240th, which we're already struggling with speed issues on 240th. I'm going to have to reduce staff, obviously, to reduce costs, and I have two hundred trucks that come into our facility a year. So we have trailer loads of packaging that come in and out. We have frozen products and fresh that go out. Sometimes we've had our busiest day with seventeen trucks in one day. Those are fifty-three-foot reefers. I'm not sure how I'm going to get them to my place and out. Also, I'm not sure if anyone's communicated with Thunderbird that that road is closing because that's their show season. There'll be approximately, what, fifteen, twenty shows? Thousands of people will be showing there with great big horse trailers, once again, going down 232nd and Snake Hill and trying to get down Rollison Crescent. So the impacts... Oh, I just love right-clicking here. If you close it in September, has zero impact on me and the surrounding area. There's some commuter traffic that we'll still have to worry about. Virtually no trucks, no staff coming and going, no customers. We're done. So I found out by accident because no one thought to communicate with us. I'm not quite sure why. We have big signs. We've been there for fifty-some-odd years. And I found out through my neighbors because land was being expropriated from them. And we checked your website page. There was nothing listed. And I've had emails back and forth. I did originally communicate with Ange Qualley, but once we thought we might get to a point where legal action might be taken, we decided, obviously, to just go the formal route. Two letters I've received, very positive news for us, and the biggest complaint I probably have out of all this has been the comment from your staff member, "Why can't the project start in September?" He said to me, "We don't like to work in the rainy season." So I'm not sure if all of township goes on vacation from September to May. Going to think not.
We're just running shy on time, so maybe just to conclude.
Nope. There we go. So we're asking today that you instruct your staff to move the project to start in September. There's a lot of prep work, a lot of things that can be done, but please don't close the road until after our market's finished, our berries are harvested. The impact is it will be monumental to us, and unfortunately, we'll have to come to township to recoup those losses. I don't think there's no delay to your funding. You have lots of time. You have till 2021 to complete the work. So that's our request for you today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any feedback? We have one, just one question from Counselor Fox.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and explaining your perspective. It's always valued. Do the reefer trucks go over that lovely railroad crossing?
Every day. There's only been one incident there, and that was one of my trucks, not one I personally own, but one I hired, and the guy didn't pull the jacks up high enough, and that's... He caught them on the tracks. That's the only incident we've had with trucks. But yes, they come and go every day. There's feed trucks, giant feed trucks, Richie Feed Trucks that go up and down there as well. Egg trucks pick up there.
Yeah. Okay. No, I just wondered if...
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming.
What would be my next?
I would just... I'll just ask Mayor... Mr. Backham to comment on.
So, Your Worship, the usual practice would be during the meeting, council may at the under other business or could perhaps earlier provide some direction, or they could, if council takes no position, then no direction would be forthcoming. But do you want to have any further explanation, though, to the delegate of the overall situation? Because she makes some very good points, and there may be a middle ground, there may not, but the information is obviously not being transmitted, from what we understand, given the funding requirements and the issues that we're facing, so your decision.
Could I just have one, Counselor Qualley, and then maybe if it's not covered, we'll go into, maybe ask Ramon.
Well, I know the normal practice is to hold notice of motion or hold referrals or whatever till new business, but since Mayor Froze is out of the room now, rather than bring him back and then ask him to leave again, maybe I'll make a motion to...
Okay. Maybe first, could I have a staff... Comment from staff? And then can we move into this area? Okay.
Oh, the chair.
Okay. Would it be Mr. Ramon? Mr. Ramon, do you have any... Could you please have some input here, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't recall the specifics of my conversation with the delegate, but I do know that there are more than one reason for the timing of the works. One is not that staff don't like working in the winter, but that winter conditions usually add a significant cost to the projects, in particular those that are requiring significant fill in the order of five meters. So the current, I guess, timeline is based on two factors. One being the avoiding of the winter conditions, winter months, and the other one is the grant that we have currently secured with the federal government for fifty percent of the costs. It is correct that the works do not have to be completed until 2021, but the fact is that the application that was made by staff over a year ago was based on a timeline that required completion of the works by November of this year, which means that if we wish to have the grants, fifty percent of the funding provided by the federal government, we'll have to get the work done before November.
November 2018.
2018, unless further extensions could be obtained, and we've actually made the request for a further extension, but there's been no response yet, hence the issue of the risk. The value to the township in terms of the cost of construction being shared by the federal government's about 1.5 to $2 million on a three to $4 million project. So it certainly has significance to both parties, and I think the farm concerns are certainly paramount in some of these issues. The question is still is a bit time-sensitive, though, because we're hoping to get a response that could actually give us some more options. And as we've talked about, there is some, perhaps, there's some chance of putting it over. There's also some chance of maybe phasing it, starting it. The only thing that we know that doesn't work very well is trying to actually keep the road open during construction because of the five meters of fill. You're going to have fifteen feet raised on one side, then not on the other. So the question is, can we maybe do some preliminary work early and then do it later in the years, in July or August, or August, September, whatever actually works not to affect the businesses? That's our challenge. The other question outstanding was, we have had some discussions with Thunderbird. Their operation's a little bit different. They have some... Theirs is the routing of horse trailers effectively, and because of the slope of the pitch of the road, they're perhaps better able to actually relocate or redirect some of those. So there's an impact, but it's a different impact than there would be on the farm.
Okay. Thank you. That's a little bit of input. Thank you very much. Mayor...
So we're still waiting... Sorry, back to me?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So we're still waiting for the report or the information about the extension. So maybe I'd like to just make a referral of the delegation back to staff to work with the delegate to determine if there's any delay in construction feasible that could meet their needs and understanding the funding requirements from the federal government. So just referring this back to staff for some more work around that information we're waiting on from the feds about the delay.
Okay. We have a motion, and Counselor Sparrow seconded it. So it's on the table. Any comment? I have one. Counselor Fox, go ahead.
Yeah. And I guess trying to find a win-win in the situation in the context of where we're at, and can we take a negative and make it a positive in our respect? I mean, I think that when we, the Township of Langley, goes and requests some action outside the original parameters of the grant request, it would be helpful to... Or my question is, would it be helpful if Mrs. Driediger put together, like she's indicated she'll lose $500,000 approximately, and I'm not asking for an extensive business plan that would prove that $500,000 is lost, but maybe write a letter of support to actually look at some of the options that could not prevail so distinctly negatively on her business and could not potentially mitigate any long-term delays with this project? I don't know. I'm just trying to think if we could utilize this in a positive and constructive way rather than... And support our position in looking at some options. Is that within the realm of possibility?
We have a referral on the floor, so could I ask... Counselor Arneson, please.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the referral. I think it's a good idea. I think that we need to try and look at as many options as possible. I'm not sure if it requires amendment, but what I was thinking is perhaps because Thunderbird has been brought into the conversation, but we have not heard from them directly, at least I haven't, so maybe what we need to do is to expand the scope of the businesses that would be affected. So we have to figure out somewhere that's sort of, you know, fair and equitable to all of the different parties that would be affected. So I appreciate your coming today and explaining your situation because I think that's valuable, but I just have an opportunity maybe for some of those other businesses to be canvassed and to see what their interests and needs would be.
Okay. We have no more input on the motion. So can we just... Can you read this, the motion, before I call a question?
The motion reads that the delegation of Rhonda Driediger be referred to staff to determine if a delay is feasible given the grant parameters.
Okay. Are you...
Well, can you put me back on?
Yes. Go ahead.
Sorry. The motion was to work with the delegate to determine if any delay in construction would be feasible, meeting the needs of the delegate while mindful of the funding requirements from the federal government.
Okay. Maybe we should just have that read so we know exactly. Actually, maybe while we're waiting, Counselor Long.
Yeah. And I think I heard Counselor Arneson talk about the other businesses and residents along the route, so perhaps it should be included because it all affects everybody, right? Because there's also the other properties there, and I don't know what we can talk about now, but there are... It would affect everybody along the route, wouldn't it? So those discussions, if, when we hear the motion, it says something about discussions with the delegate and other businesses, are you thinking other... Like, I mean, Driediger sits right on the construction site. Are you meaning... You're talking about the delegation.
The motion, it doesn't matter. If the motion, if it is, if this is approved and the referral goes to staff, the information that comes back can be shared with everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not specific just to Driediger, but obviously, they are here with their impact study on their business.
Okay. So I'd like to call a question, but maybe if we could just get that last little bit so that we...
That the delegation of Rhonda Driediger be referred to staff to determine if a delay in construction would be feasible, considering the needs of the delegate while meeting the requirements of the federal grant.
Okay. Good. If I press this button, is this on... Or should I press that button over there if I go to vote? I'm in the mayor's chair. I don't want to be absent. Okay. Can we... I'm going to call a question. Go ahead. Okay. Vote completed. How do I do that? It won't take my finger.
Vote completed? Oh, you have to label it first.
Oh. What would it be under? Delegation E1? E1?
No, E1. E is an egg.
E?
Echo.
One. Vote complete. Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I think...
That can't be there. That has to be taken out. Mayor Froze is not here.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. Well, you can correct that. I think it was unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Counselor Davis. And so we'll move on to reports to council. And F1 is compensation for overpaid property taxes due to assessment errors by the British Columbia Assessment Authority. Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh. Any discussion on F1? Seeing none, I'll call a question. It carries unanimously. Move on to F2, budget transfer request for AD Avenue widening Phase Two. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Davis. Discussion on F2. Counselor Richter?
Yeah. I'm just wondering why this didn't come forward in the budget process because we didn't... It wasn't that long ago when we dealt with the budget.
I will ask Ms. or Mr. Steffi may have an answer for that. Thank you.
Your worship, the works are now, just now nearing completion, so in terms of having a good understanding as to what monies could potentially be surplus to the project would have been unknown at the time of the budget discussions.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to F3, Fort Langley Projects Public Input Report. Just before I call a motion, excellent report, very thorough. Thank you very much to the staff. Counselor Whitmarsh moves it. Is there a second or Counselor Qualley? Okay. Discussion. Counselor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, and I'll echo those comments with respect to this report and the summation that it provides us. I think it provides us with a couple of things. Number one, it's an excellent summation, but I think it's an excellent initiative or impetus for us to move ahead, and hopefully the various different agencies will come on board and support our forthcoming grant applications to make this happen. I don't want to, and I think it's imperative that we don't say, oh, well, just because there's so much in favor that we're going to go ahead with this, because in reality, I think we have to get some funding envelopes in place to make this happen. But I was really appreciative of the tremendous turnout of the public. I couldn't believe it when I got there at like ten to three, and I happened to have a meeting in Fort Langley after I had visited the... No, after I had wormed my way through the myriad of people in there, and the lineup was still out to the road at 5:30, so it was very well-received, and that I think is evidenced by the number of people that responded. So I look forward to a future with this particular project, and we just have to make sure that we don't put any false expectations out there that now that we've got this endorsement that it's going to happen tomorrow.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes. Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you also for putting this very comprehensive staff report together. I did have a question. I'm really very supportive of putting this forward with the provisos that Counselor Fox has just pointed to. I noticed that there was generally an assessment of a percentage of people who are for, against, and no opinion, but people had some really interesting, I guess, feedback about some of the different initiatives. So I'm just wondering if you have an assessment through, Your Worship, I guess, to maybe Mr. Tullamello, about at what point the public and council will have another opportunity to review these proposals with potential amendments?
Your worship, to Counselor Arneson, the process is an ongoing one with respect to many of these projects. The ones along the riverfront are not at the stage for any public consultation at this point. We are still looking forward to talking to residents of Macmillan Island, and the First Nations community has invited us to come out and speak to them about many of the projects, so it's very much ongoing. The whole process moving forward that I'm proposing is that we look to see what developer interests there would be with respect to the museum heritage project at this point, and of course, approaching the federal government by their deadline at the end of this month with regards to a grant application.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yes. I was really impressed with the high approval rating from Fort Langley, like over eighty percent. That's amazing, and we're obviously doing something really right. And the other piece of feedback that I think came through loud and clear is how appreciative the community is to be working with the First Nations on this project. So I'm wondering with regards to the recommendation in front of us that says proceed with the call of expressions of interest in a request for proposals from the development community and/or other interested parties in order to secure this construction or funding, will we be including First Nation developer groups in that? Because I think that would be the icing on the cake if we could, you know, have a developer from the First Nations leading the... Because I think that would be the icing on the cake if we could, you know, have a developer from the First Nations leading the development.
Through your worship to Counsel Richter, the terms of the expressions of interest have not been formulated as yet. However, there could be a component that resonates with trying to attract parties that are coming forward with that kind of basic understanding of First Nations and/or partnership for some of this development.
Yeah, and so is that something that we can also discuss with the Quantlin Nation? With regards to groups that they might know that are in a position to be able to undertake this type of project?
Most definitely at the direction of council, that could happen.
Oh, okay, so does that mean then that I need to put an amendment in here with regards to including First Nation development groups?
Actually, we're in actually fairly good shape. We've been having discussions with the Quantlin First Nation and their business group all the way throughout. And they do have development, I guess, arms. So they're certainly in a position that they can actually be part of the process if they so choose. And I think they will be. Their focus, however, does remain, and Peter suggested this, is on the waterfront. That's of the scope and scale that is very much of interest to them. So they will be looking to work on both projects, but right now their focus is on the waterfront. However, they are positioned to actually pursue this if they so choose.
Okay, but that's something we're definitely going to follow up with them on, right?
Not only follow up, we already have, so we will continue to follow up with them because they're already in the loop.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just direct to the bullet point where it says, continue discussions with the same Quantlin business group towards their participation, et cetera. It's right in the.
Yeah, but that's the Quantlin group, they may not do development, but they may know other First Nation groups that do development.
And I just want to point out, that's what those discussions, based on discussion we've had right now with our staff, is they would be including that in those discussions.
Yeah, but that limits it to the Bedford House property. I think they should also have the opportunity to look at the actual museum, too.
Resolution is towards her participation in the FLMHP, the Fort Langley Museum Heritage Project, and for the development of the Bedford House property.
Yeah, it's all in there. It's all been contemplated by Mr. Tullamello, thank you. Counsel Qualley.
Thanks, yeah, I also wanted to compliment you on the process leading up to the open house and the communication and the open house itself. I would suggest for further development, you know, public input sessions, we look for a bigger facility. It was really well attended. I think the part that was most interesting was the involvement of Quantlin at the open house. They were positioned, at least while I was there, at different stations. And they were giving a very different perspective of sort of the overall project, because they weren't speaking about the project like developers or people who typically do this kind of thing. They didn't have that sort of lingo that our staff would have around the particulars. So I think a lot of people weren't able to get technical answers from them, but were really able to get more of a sort of a feel of the project from them. And I think that was really important. And I think that's what helped with the high approval ratings was having them there, actually being able to talk about the involvement in the process. And yeah, I think you guys did a really outstanding job on that. So congratulations and thank you for your hard work on that. I'm looking forward to seeing where this will go, because those proposals are certainly exciting, not just to the folks in Fort Langley, but I've had feedback from people all over the community about it. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions, so thank you very much, Mr. Tullamello, for helping out with that. And no further discussion, call a question on F3. Carries unanimously. Move on to correspondence, this is one item of correspondence, could I have a motion to receive, please? Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Davis, any discussion on G1? Seeing none, call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to minutes of committees, H1 is Agriculture Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee, and the Heritage Advisory Committee, could I have a motion to receive the minutes? Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Arneson, any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call a question, oh, sorry, I'll counsel the vote, Counsel Arneson, sorry.
Sorry, yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment, because in reading the minutes, I found it very helpful, and I thought it was very appropriate that there was a presentation that was made to the committee regarding a pellet factory. And I really appreciated the fact to be able to look at their vetting of this and come up with different discussion points about, you know, the benefits or the deficiencies maybe of considering the expansion of this industrial use. And so I just want to comment, I think that it's very helpful when we are using our committees in that regard, because it helps to inform council's overall decision-making going forward. So I just want to say thanks to the committee.
Thank you, Counsel Qualley.
Thank you, I don't know if you want to take this question now or in the next piece of business, but in the minutes, I was reading the details from the delegation or the presentation from the young agrarians. And in the minutes, there wasn't actually an ask for the $10,000. And I just wondered, maybe I need to wait till the next motion, but how that amount was, how you decided on that amount as a committee, or sort of where that number came from?
Well, maybe we should leave that to the, when we actually have the motion.
Okay.
It'd be, I think, when we're giving the minutes, is if there's an error or anything or comments in it.
Well, if it was an omission in there, I mean, I'm asking if they did ask for that, if they're, because I didn't read it in the minutes, so there was a disconnect for me with the dollar amount.
Was there an ask in the, there was, okay, so maybe the minutes could reflect that, thanks for bringing that up.
So there was an ask for $10,000?
Yeah, just a motion. Motion, it's a motion from the committee, but I think what Counsel Qualley's asking, in the delegation, was there an ask, and is it reflected in the minutes? By the delegation?
We do believe it was there, we're going to go back to the notes and check.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so on receipt of those minutes, I'll call a question. Oh, I got this.
No, no, I'm on the next one, too.
Okay, okay, so there we go, I've called it now, I'll push your buttons. I'm receiving the minutes, yeah. Carries unanimously, so now we're on to H2, and who would like to move this? Counsel Richter moves it, second there, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Long?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the $10,000 that was earmarked for the preparation and maintenance of an inventory of land available for rent or lease to active farmers is also a very important initiative. So I'm a little bit concerned that the motion is asking to move it over. Does that mean we're going to give up on that? Because I think inventoring our lands is very important, to find out what can be leased to young agrarians. So maybe could we find the money elsewhere and still keep going? Or does staff have a comment as to why that money's no longer needed, no longer earmarked for that super initiative?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I'd like to ask staff, from Mr. Backen, if you could direct it to the appropriate staff member, on the funding availability within that program, are we taking away from something? Or is it contemplated within the agricultural viability strategy?
There was an allocation within the committee's funds, it's not their funds, it's council's funds, township's funds, for that amount, or for a certain sum to go towards that study Counsel Long referenced. The committee is asking council to reallocate from those funds, the sum of $10,000. It looks to be for the matching program for the mainland, for the young agrarians, lower mainland matching program. So there's some matching funds coming in. The people that were present at the meeting, I think Counsel Davis, were you at the meeting? And Ms. Stepto was also there, they could perhaps elaborate further in terms of the discussion.
But before I, before I, your worship, maybe we can find the funds elsewhere and keep this initiative going? So let's hear some of the.
I guess what we're not sure is, the initiative may be very well going as it is within the funding envelopes. We'd have to go back to the committee to understand their thought process, because we certainly can find the funds, but we're not sure that the $10,000 that they've asked to be reallocated is necessary for their study, but perhaps Counsel Davis could comment on the.
I'll just ask Counsel Davis to comment.
I think what it was, was the presentation came, and it was brought up that we have that envelope for an inventory of land available for rent or lease. So that's what was connected, right, to the young agrarians and what they do. So we just recommended that we use that $10,000, because it's, like I say, it doesn't just maintenance of an inventory, but it's available land for rent or lease to active farmers. So that's why we went with that route.
Okay, and the agriculture, just want to make sure, I think what Counsel Long is really going towards, that we don't rob the agricultural viability strategy funding for something else, now we've shorted it. And we still want this project to go through, but is it the appropriate fund? And that's, I think, the question. Would it be appropriate just to refer this to staff, just to come back with that answer?
The answer would be council contingency to start, your worship. We wanted to keep both going, because what I heard Counsel Davis say was that they moved from the study to the actuals. So what they were saying is they'd actually use the funds for actual farming. If council wishes to do both, we would simply use $10,000 from council contingencies, as has been touched for 2018.
Yeah, okay. So we could go with this, that's fine, if there's an issue, then we certainly could come back and take it out of council contingency for the agricultural viability strategy if they needed a top-up. We could do it that way, so this motion could still hold. So that's what's going to happen, we're going to hear back, or should we make that? No, I think this, Mr. Backen can correct me, but this motion could stand. If there is a shortfall in agricultural viability strategy, certainly we could top it up with the council contingency fund, so.
That would work, your worship.
That would work too, either way, but.
So should that be in the motion? No, we'll get staff hearing that.
Staff would come back to us with that.
It can be in the motion, we can take that direction if you simply want to advise it to make a slight amendment that we include the contribution from council contingency for $10,000 to continue the agricultural viability strategy earmarked for the preparation and maintenance of inventory of land. We can do that.
Do that. So that's the direction of council, and there's no opposition, we can just accept that. Is the motion, amend the motion, amend the motion to come from the council contingency?
Yes.
Okay, I see with unanimous consent, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, move on to Counsel Qualley.
Thanks, I don't really understand what the money is for. Is the money for the whole program? Like, there isn't a specific ask in the notes. So I'm not sure what they're using the money for, because this program is Surrey, Langley, Delta, Richmond, and Chilliwack. They have one match that's been made in Langley. I understand the demand is here, but I don't understand how this money's going to be used, and how we got to $10,000. And if we can support farm activity for young agrarians with something beyond $10,000 that's going to get those other six people or seven people waiting for a match in Langley, I think we should look at that. I just, I'm trying to understand what this money's going to be used for.
Well, this program is with Langley, I believe it was in 2016 and 2017. I mean, it's like a, you know, there's, it's like a committee, like, we, nothing's done for, I mean, it's bookwork and, you know, I mean, they.
Just to support the group to move forward.
Supporting the young agrarians with their administration and stuff, is that what this is for? I guess my point is.
It's for the lower mainland matching program here, but Langley is a big part of it. So that's why we thought we would support it.
But I guess my concern is, if there's an opportunity to do something to help them enhance their program, is $10,000 is what's left in, what you guys saw as left in that fund? Is there a way we as a municipality can support them on a different level, a higher level, that will move those five matches in Langley or whatever it is that are waiting to come forward? I think, I mean, it was, this presentation went to committee, but I think this presentation has merit beyond committee for the ag viability of the whole township. So I appreciate the $10,000, but, I mean, if we're spending $10,000 on photocopiers and bookkeepers, I think there's a way we can maybe enhance that for them.
You know what?
I think, maybe I can just jump in there, I think this is money going towards the program that they're working towards. It certainly isn't going to buy any land, it's not going to, but it's a start. And I think I'd let the committee come back and advise it otherwise. I just want to say I support the committee, I think they've done had a discussion. But I hear what you're saying, Counsel Qualley, and I think there is certainly more could be done, but this is what they've asked for, to help move this forward as part of administrative cost.
Yeah, I think, I mean, looking at the information from the minutes, you know, they've made five matches in Surrey, Maple Ridge, and Delta, five more in Surrey, Richmond, and Chilliwack. And Langley's had one match, well, what's the, I mean, I'd like to know more about.
Well, what can happen is, they don't want to just match it. They also, when they have a want and a need, then they go a little, they go further than that. They, like, they'll screen the person with the land, and they'll screen the person that wants the land, so that they can make good matches. And, yeah, sorry, you know what, you've caught me.
That's okay.
I went to the meeting, but I was there, but I don't have the details on exactly what. I know that there's, there's things they need, like, boasters, you know, and it costs money to get on the computer and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
I don't have the answers for that.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you, and I probably have maybe the same question as Counsel Qualley. It's not that I have any concerns necessarily about what's happening, or that this is not a good idea. I think it very well could be a good idea, I just don't think that the motion provides us enough information. I don't really know enough about what's happening. It doesn't really say what the $10,000 is used for, or how that number came up. I don't know if it's for the 20 hours times 12 months to facilitate the matches in Langley, and that works out to so much money per hour, and that got to $10,000. I don't, I guess to me, I would just like to have more information as to how the number $10,000 came up, and where that $10,000 is going to be spent. Is it on a person that we're hiring for $10,000? Is it for a photocopy machine that they need? Is it, what is it $10,000 for? And so I'm not opposed to $10,000, I'm just struggling with what it's for, it just seems very ambiguous right now.
Mr. Backen is conferring with staff who are there. I understand it's for administration purposes of this group, but. Okay, just going to wait.
So your worship, what we do know is that the program is one that matches a young farmer with a senior farmer for the purpose of learning agrarian practices and agricultural practices. So the program, the administrative component of this is really to put the farmers together and to have a bit of a list of, I guess, of senior farmers and junior farmers that they could actually bring together in a matchmaking process. What we're unsure of, though, is, is any of the funds earmarked for actually paying the rent from the junior farmer to the senior farmer, that we don't have that information. Counsel Davis, do you happen to know?
But I don't think it's going to.
Not for rent, it's for administration.
It's for the matching program itself.
You know, I've dropped the ball on this one. I'm wondering if I should refer this to council or staff so that I can get my facts together. Because I'm not letting this look very good.
We could refer, that's okay, we need more information, there's a lot of questions from council. So certainly a motion to refer to staff, bring it back next meeting with more information is appropriate. So Counsel Davis moves, Counsel Fox.
Is a referral or a deferral, refer to staff to do something, or just defer to the next meeting?
Referral, just to come back with some of the questions that have been asked by council, exactly what the money's going for, and a little bit more detail on that.
So refer for an update on the program and back to the next agenda.
That's right, for the next agenda. Okay, so I'm going to push the amendment on referral, discussion on referral, Counsel Searle on referral.
Yeah, that was what my comment was going to be. Is it possible that maybe we can have, whether it be in a staff report, or maybe even just having a request them to come as a delegation to provide more information to us? I just think, you know, in the scheme of our budgeting, $10,000 is a small amount, but it really is still a large amount of money that we would be giving. So I think we need to have, make sure we really are 100% sure of what we're doing, so.
I think staff can take this direction, that they could reach out to them as they wish to delegate.
Yeah, if they wanted to provide it as a delegation form, or if it would just be summarized in a report, would be fine, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Long.
Yeah, and I think when we're spending taxpayers' money, we need to know exactly what's happening. And it could be $20,000, right, because we're talking about $10,000 that was in the budget already, and then this other $10,000. So the referral, let's be clear, is staff will come back with more information and a pathway to proceed.
Yeah.
Is that what we're hearing?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you, okay, I'll see no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on H2, on the referral. It carries unanimously. Okay, clear the queue, start all over again. Move to other business, and I want to Street Protection by Law, Counsel Fox, who wishes. Counselor Fox, you wish to move in and speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I'll read this as, whereas at the council meeting of March the 5th, 2018, Mrs. Sakurai made a delegation to council regarding the need for a tree protection bylaw in a township. And whereas the council work plan for the 2018 calendar and budget year has been determined as per the last council priority planning session facilitated by Mr. Gordon McIntosh. And whereas staff is fully engaged in fulfilling the expectations of that work plan on top of their day-to-day project workload and further that the budget and staff funding would be necessary to form and carry out the work of the standing committee and any recommendations that were derived from their recommendations, therefore it be resolved that the recommendation of the formation of a standing committee to review a tree protection bylaw for the township of Langley be put as an item of consideration on the agenda of the council planning and priority workshop of the new term of office of those elected on, to council on October 20th. And further, be it resolved that any recommendations requiring additional funds, materials or staffing be part of the 2019 budget cycle discussion. I so move.
There's a second there. Counselor Whitmarsh seconds discussion. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I believe this motion is out of order and I, because I don't think this council can handicap a future council. So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, to rule the motion out of order.
Let me take a look, just hold on. The, so there's been a point of order, so basically, we're, I'm just going to read the motion again, just to be clear. I think if, if Counselor Fox was that the bylaw be put on, if it's not a, you can't demand, you're right, we can't.
Can't bind a future council.
That's right, so, but certainly can be requested to be put on and then, then it's not binding. So Counselor Fox, if you wish to make an amendment as such, that would say that this is, that we request that this be an item of consideration on the agenda.
That.
Then that would.
Request the recommendation of the formation of, after, therefore be it resolved that we request the recommendation, just put "we request" before the.
And then that, I think we solve that, exactly, I agree. And we resolve that any recommendations requiring additional funds be part of 2019, that's certainly something this, this council can do. So if with council's approval, unless someone wishes to dispute that, then we can move on.
No, I disagree.
Okay, so that's moved as an amendment by Counselor Fox. And is there a second to that amendment? Counselor Whitmarsh seconds it, so on the amendment, add the words "request." Any discussion on that? Counselor Richter?
Yeah, it's still not appropriate. This is just plain and simple politicking in the silly season. We've had a very serious request come forward from the public to deal with the matter now. Pushing it off to the next council is not right. That's making somebody else responsible for a decision that needs to be made now. So, no, I don't support the whole motion. I still think it's out of order.
Okay, so this is on the amendment, okay. Counselor Sparrow on the amendment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support it. I think that there are many examples of work plan items that don't stop and start in the, in, along our term. Lots of things are, some are, go past each council's term, and I think this is one of them, that we're saying, there is nine council meetings left in this term. Nine council meetings. I'm not quite sure how we would be able to create a tree protection bylaw for the whole township with nine council meetings left. I think that's, you know, making it become an election issue versus actually looking at what we can actually accomplish, what, how, how we're going to put that on staff, the public, to be taking on this large of an item with nine meetings left in our term. So I agree with recommending that this be something that the next council pick up and address, but trying to have us complete that with nine meetings left, I think, is not possible and not within our current work plan that we have as a council already dealt with, so I'm going to support.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. I think it's out of order for this reason. There's already a motion at the last meeting. The motion was to refer the issue to staff. So how can we have another motion that says now don't refer it to staff, refer it to somewhere else? Isn't the motion to refer it to staff good enough? And whether, I don't, it doesn't say when they had to come back. I mean, they're going to have to look at the, at the issue. It was, says the issues brought up by the delegation be referred to staff. And I think that's probably the best thing we could do. It's something we've, we've tried to make a policy that when delegations come through with very complex issues or any issue, gets referred to staff, they can come back and give us some direction. There's all kinds of aspects of this issue. What's happening in, in Brookswood Furniture already, is that something that should be considered, you know, there's all kinds of aspects to this, to the tree bylaw. And right now, we've passed a motion at the last meeting that the delegation be referred to staff for a report. So I, I, I'd rather leave it there.
Mr. Backen.
And I'm wondering how you can allow two motions.
Okay, so just, I just want to, thank you. I believe, correct me, the motion, the last meeting was to have staff come back with how to create a committee, but I'm not sure. And that's what it was, it wasn't?
No.
What was the?
It was for advice.
We're looking, Your Worship, I believe the reference was to the form of the standing committee. If you just have a moment, we can begin to find the resolution.
I have the resolution right here. It says that the delegation be referred to staff for a report and advice concerning this process of standing committee or comprehensive.
Creating a committee.
The whole issue, not about moving.
So, Your Worship, the full motion reads that the delegation from the party be referred to staff for a report and advice concerning the process for the formation of a standing committee on a comprehensive tree protection bylaw. So staff's focus has been on the process of the formation of a standing committee. The draft, of course, makes reference to the overall, overarching municipal act, which requires there be one member of council for every member of the public, and we're focusing on how we can either enlarge it or how we're trying to actually shrink it to, to make those match, because the most it could be is an 18-member committee.
Okay, so, yeah, basically, so basically, that motion was referred on making a committee. This motion is about the tree protection bylaw, just to boil it right down. So I would say this motion is in order, that other motion still stands. Staff can still come back with a report on the request and the motion from last.
Oh, I haven't.
Maybe already has. Okay. Counselor Fox?
Well, thank you. I think that Counselor Richter brought this into the political paradigm by saying to the delegate, are you willing to make this an election issue? Wow, wow, yeah, let's, let's, let's get that answered. Even if this was to go to a committee right today, the new council isn't fettered by the decision of this council. So what does the difference make? Okay, let's, let's get a standing committee, go bang and get this thing out. New council comes in and says, we don't like it, throw it out, all it's a waste of time. I think Counselor Sparrow's right, we have nine meetings left. Let me say, this needs to be carefully thought out. It needs to be carefully processed. It needs to be a part of, and the council has to make the decision that this is a priority in the planning decision. Counselor Richter, all of a sudden, this is a huge issue. Where was it when we were talking to Gordon McIntosh six months ago? It wasn't there. So you know what? The work plan evolved, with all due respect, to a democratically derived work plan. Staff was hired to implement that democratically derived work plan. They then moved forward with not only that work plan, but their day-to-day work. To put a task force together is not an in, is, is not easy to do. This is a bylaw. Folks, this is a bylaw. Any bylaw, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Seffy, through you, Your Worship, to Mr. Seffy, a minimum, minimum, six months, if there was no, if, if staff had the time available. Often, often, a year to 18 months, correct?
That would be correct, Your Worship.
Thank you. So even if we struck it today and we had ideal conditions with staff, financial resources, it could be anywhere up to 12 to 18 months for us to get to the bylaw. So my, my motion does not preclude the fact that you, Counselor Richter, or any other member of this council could not put forward a motion to put an interim bylaw in place until this process actually went through the legitimate learned fashion that it, that it should. My motion is saying, Mrs. Sakai, I'm sorry if I mispronounced her name, I appreciate your, your work, I think it's important, I think it needs to have the due diligence, it needs to be covered in the work plan, planning with Mr. McIntosh, assuming through Your Worship to Mr. Backen, Mr. McIntosh coming?
What you mean is that council workshop, council party, council law workshops.
Is Mr. McIntosh coming?
We have tried to reserve Mr. McIntosh for our usual priority sessions later in the fall, November of 18.
Okay, okay. The other piece to this is the cost. It's the, not only the cost of task force, but it's the cost of implementing the task force recommendations. Our delegates said they have three people doing nothing but tree bylaw issues in the city of Richmond. We have none, zero. At a bylaw officer's cost, through you, Mr. Backen, 110, 120?
Your Worship, including, including all the benefits, that's about correct.
Okay, so there's a $360,000 bill, roughly speaking, which is a 0.36% tax increase right now. It's a million dollars a percent. Is this, is this, does this, are we assuming that if we go today, that next year's tax increase was going to be 0.36% with that? Folks, I talked to Mrs. Sinclair last meeting, and I think there was others in the room. I think we have a 0.5% increase coming from MSP alone, MSP cost to the township of Langley. The next year, you have a 1.3% increase. Am I correct, Mrs. Sinclair?
That, that's correct. Over the two years.
Okay, so in the next two years, you've got a 0.5 and then a 1.3% tax increase. So, you know, folks, this takes some careful extrapolation.
We could just deal with the amendment, that's all we're discussing.
And so, okay.
We've got the request.
My recommendation is that this simply be sent to the next council planning session facilitated by Mr. McIntosh, so we can take the time to do it properly. If somebody wants to make a motion to put, a notice of motion to put an interim.
Up to the amendment, which is just to change the.
All right, I'll finish there, I've got lots more to say, it's all written down here.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson, on the amendment. Let's try and focus our discussion on the amendment. We'll have a chance to talk to the motion.
Okay. I don't support the amendment because I don't support the basic premise that we're going to delay this any further than we already have, so I won't be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Counselor Fox mentioned the, the last session with Mr. McIntosh, and that was held in June of 2017, like, nine months ago. Lots of things can happen in nine months, and lots of things have happened in nine months. For example, we passed an OCP with a tree bylaw attached to it that only covers undeveloped areas. Like, what were we thinking when we did that? Everybody in the public thought that the, the tree bylaw that went through with the new Brookswood OCP applied to all of Brookswood. It doesn't. It just applies to the undeveloped areas. So I'm not supporting this. I, I think the whole thing, I agree with Counselor Long, the whole thing should be deferred for a staff report. We asked for one, let's wait till we get it before we take any additional actions.
Thank you. So on the amendment, to change the word or to add request in there, I'm now going to call the question on the amendment.
So can you tell me whether?
The amendment is to, instead of, if, you could just, the amendment was just to put request that the future council. I'm paraphrasing, but Ms. Bauer could.
Therefore, please resolve that we request the recommendation of a formation.
Yes, there you go. Okay, so I'll call the question.
I'm going to speak here again.
Well, we get to speak to the main motion, so it's carried, the amendment has carried. Counselor Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. Now we're on to the main motion as amended, and there's a speaker's list here. Counselor Long, you're next.
Yeah, but Your Worship, it's, I'm sorry, I voted against that because it says there be, that the recommendation of forming the standing, there isn't a recommendation to form a committee. There is not a recommendation to form a committee. The, the issue of a committee has been referred to staff. So I, this, I think, is going the wrong way for everybody, because this is assuming that we are recommending that a committee be formed. No, the issue of forming committee was referred to staff.
That's my opinion. Okay, thank you. Counsel Fox?
Well, I guess I'm asking, following through with the delegate's request. The delegate requested exactly what we've, what I'm putting forth here, so I'm responding to the delegate by saying, number one, we need action. I agree. Number two, let's put a committee, a task force, committee, whatever we want, together. I agree. Number three, I don't particularly see this as making a really whole, a lot of sense in making this an election issue. Let's give some design and planning to this whole thing so that this can actually come together in a productive fashion. We know, Counselor, nine meetings left. We know new council's not fettered by old council decision, so therefore, any work we do this term can be thrown out the door, and we've seen that before. I haven't seen it recently, but we've seen it back in the late 2000s where that happened. And it, it's a costly exercise and, and Mr. Seffy's staff would be very frustrated to get, to enter into this and then all of a sudden be thrown out. You've got two months of summertime, all these factors interplay into it. A tree protection bylaw will only cover 25% of the township, only. I realize that that's an important 25%, but 75% will not be covered, and many of the emails that I've received have said a township-wide tree bylaw, you can't have a township-wide tree bylaw. I'm sorry, you can't. We're a regulated agricultural community and that 75% is exempt. So what, you know, let's, you know, we've got people in the public saying, let's vote against this because it doesn't deal with the issue now. I realize that. Make an, anybody can on this, can make an interim bylaw request by notice of motion today, it can be on next meeting's agenda. And you know what? In two weeks, fine. But my point is, Mrs. Sakai came, she made a presentation, I'm trying to follow through in as constructive and functional a way as we possibly can and make the people that have supported her understand some of the factors that, that play into this. We don't have the staff. We got a plan for staff. We don't have, you know, if, if, if it's going to take 12 months to produce, that's next term. So, folks, this is just the reality, and to, to say that I'm trying to stall it, not at all. In fact, I'm trying to bring some structure to it and some value to it. Make an interim report, a tree bylaw to, to, to go into effect, fine with me, but at least there's some structure to the, to the delegate.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this, this motion is a, is a positive response to the delegation that we had last meeting. I think there was a request for us to, to put together a standing committee and to put together a, a tree bylaw. I think it requires a lot of consideration and good discussion, and I think that's important to have. And so this is a, a motion that comes very, at a very short time period after the following meeting to suggest that, that it is important and this council thinks it's important and that we'd like to bring it forward or recommend that it comes forward to the 2019 budget process. It is an expensive undertaking to do, not only to do the standing committee, but also if it does, do more, if we do move forward with a, a tree bylaw, it's expensive for us to do that, as, as we heard from the delegation last meeting. And so this is a positive response, this is suggesting that it's important. I didn't hear anybody suggest during the 2018 budget process, as we are presenting all kinds of budget items and those things going to budget, I didn't hear anyone suggest that they would like to add three staff members to implement a tree bylaw. I didn't hear one person suggest it. In fact, I heard some council members suggest that we are spending, the budget was too high and the increase was already too high, and therefore we shouldn't even pass that budget. But there was plenty of opportunity and we did add some things in there and no one suggested it, and now that the budgeting process is over, we need to move it forward to the 2019 process. That's proper governance, and we need to do that, and so for that reason, I will support this motion.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, as challenging as it may be, and with all due respect to differing opinions, I think this will be an election issue, whether we like it or not. I think the community came forward and they expressed something that I, in a good faith kind of way, it may not be something that we. kind of way, it may not be something that we, we liked the timing of it. We may not have necessarily agreed with the delivery of the framework that they were suggesting, but I think it is very presumptive at this time to attach any kind of figures, any kind of timelines, any other kind of information to what was going forward. I fundamentally agree with Counsel Long. I think that we just resolved to send it to council. We didn't say anything else. I think that there's lots of other examples of how we look for information to bring it back. I don't think that the nature of the request that we supported was to make sure that we had signed, sealed, and delivered a tree protection bylaw for the entire township of Langley by the time the next election rolled around. I just don't think that that was what happened. However, what we did do, I'd like to remind council on our last council meeting, is that we apparently unanimously endorsed an asset management strategy that talked about trees. So I don't think that we should be looking so discreetly at the fact, well, we've got the trees over here, but then we've got all these other budgetary issues. I think that, from my perspective, we don't know what this would look like, and personally, I do think that we should not unnecessarily defer this. And decision-making for our next council, well, you know, there's, how long would we like to wait in order for this to happen? So I think that there will be a strong public opinion, one way or another, and I agree, Counselor Fox is saying, well, it can't be. We've discussed these things many times. Of course, it cannot be in ALR land. We have not had any provisions for that. This does not mention that, it's a fact. But what I would say is a fact that we do know is we currently have no valid empirical information about the nature of our tree inventory, either on urban or agricultural land, and I think that's a problem. I think we have to move forward, and I think it's a good faith request, and I will not be supporting any kind of deferral because I think that when there is political will for certain things to transpire, I know council could potentially move heaven and earth, and I don't think it is unreasonable under the circumstances to consider that the community interest would be best served if we just allow staff to come back with their report and not put the parameters on it to say, oh, well, that's for next council to decide. I just don't support that.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you. I won't be too long here. I don't see why October 20th is in there. I, I don't know. If it's going to take a year, well, we did the Blueberry Task Force thing in nine months, and so it's going to take a while, but this says, okay, well, we're not going to do anything till October 20th, and I think that's wrong. I think we should just, I mean, things can creep up. Look at TARA. I mean, all of a sudden, I know TARA's in ALR, but I think that we, it should, it's going to staff, and let's hear back from report, and don't, don't put, to the way I see it, and I know that Counselor Fox maybe argued, but it, by putting October 20th in there, you are putting a date, whether you're slamming your brakes on or speeding it up, I don't know. I just, why have October 20th in there? I think we need to get, need to get started at it and carry on. It's very important.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
We're not starting from zero. We have, we have had an interim tree bylaw. We've currently got a tree bylaw for the undeveloped parts of Brookswood. It's not going to take forever and a day to review and strengthen, if strengthening is needed, those two bylaws. I mean, this could be done in a period of three months. So I, I think we should be, we shouldn't even be passing this motion. It's destructive. It's not progressive. And so I'm going to move a deferral of this motion for the time being until staff report back on the motion that we passed last meeting.
There's a second to the deferral. Counsel Arneson seconds deferral. Any discussion on deferral? And then let's keep it to deferral so we can move on quickly. We've had lots of good discussion. Counsel Fox.
Yeah, I'll keep it to the deferral. So I'm looking at probably anywhere from two to three months to get the report back from staff because they get a lot of work on their workload. So two to three months takes us, okay, we're sitting here in March, early April, May, June. We then move into the summer. We know what public reaction is in the summer. Oh, you're just trying to bury something. That takes us into September. So we're right, actually, at, I mean, we've probably lost in those two to three months, we've probably lost six of the nine meetings that we're talking about here. I think that, you know what? Deferring it just says to the public, hold it. You know what? We'll wait for the staff report. I'm trying to give the public some, some value to the, to the delegate that came here and saying, look, yes, we're putting this forward, so we're moving on something. It's not going to happen overnight. I know that, and I think she works in the public paradigm in the city of Richmond. She knows that bylaws take a long time, and anything that is a bylaw has to go through a legal, an interim bylaw is temporary, very different. A bylaw has to go through the legal, has to be vetted by legal as well. So deferral, all you're doing is putting the same timeframe as I'm putting it in.
Thank you. No, I agree. I think this is important enough that we should be dealing with this tonight. I won't support deferral. I'll call a question on deferral, and that is I won. It's on deferral. And deferral passes. Oh, sorry, deferral fails. I got to read this thing right. Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, Marifolds, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow, as opposed to deferral. So we're back to the main motion, and the next speaker on the main motion is Counsel Fox.
No.
Okay. Well, that is the end. Okay. So, all right. So I'm just going to say a few things I've heard from council. I see no further discussion. This has been talked about making this election issue. I believe that by putting this forward, this motion forward, yeah, it becomes an election issue in a way. It becomes an election issue, and I certainly support having a fulsome discussion and discussion and getting a group together that can work towards this tree protection bylaw. Our experience in the last little while, as Counsel Davis mentioned, it was the important work that was done by the agriculture committee on the Blueberry bylaw. Took nine months. I, at the beginning of this term, brought in a standing committee or a merits committee on public engagement. That took nine months and about $50,000, and that was just a policy prior to bringing it to council. That took time, too, and it took, it took a solid work, I think, the community, it took solid work without the, I don't know what you'd call it, but election looming on everybody. We're able to do it in an environment that we could engage with the public and find out what was important and come up with a document. That is a legacy of this council, and that took time. It's not something you can just throw out there. And, you know, we need the community input. We need to find out what best practices are and successes and failures from other jurisdictions, and we certainly don't want to have something that, that fails. The, this is important. I think it's important, and I'm going to support this. I think it's important that we have something. And the next council, yeah, if they don't want to deal with it, that's up to them, but at least this council has, has said that this is important to move forward, and there is no time in this next nine meetings to do this. So I will support the motion. Thank you. And I'm calling it. I won. The motion as amended. The motion as amended with, the amendment was that this is a request. Okay. And the motion carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. And Counsel Fox, you've been busy, so I'm going to put you back on again. Counsel Fox.
Thank you. I guess I've been doing too much homework here. Okay. So I'm just going to read, therefore, it be resolved that a community input group task force be formed to consist of one individual from the community representative from each of the aforementioned six communities, which are in their warehouses, for a total of six, one individual from the business community from each of the six identified communities, that's a BA, BIA, or other particular group, for a total of six, and one appointed by council to serve as chairperson. That's not a council member to be served as, but somebody else. One from the agricultural community, one member of the recreation and cultural community, for a total community input task force of 15. Each member shall be appointed to the community input task force or each council, so that's 24 in total. Each public member of the community input group task force will be selected by council and must agree that they're participating as a community volunteer in a community input task force group and confirm they will not be engaged proactively either as a candidate or special interest group, and the group input task force will meet once a month as per schedule by staff at April, May, and June. All members of council will be encouraged to actively participate, and the meetings will be facilitated with funds coming to support this initiative from council contingency, and the community input task force shall deliberate and provide recommendations to council within four months. That's that it may be, that it may be important and significant component in Township of Langley's planning workshop in 2019 budget deliberations. I said, move.
Okay. Before you move, just, you mentioned something in your, we talked about the person who serves as a chairperson. You clarified not to be a member of council, so in your motion, could you maybe add that a resident from the municipality be appointed by council?
Right. Okay. One resident of the municipality be appointed by council to serve as chairperson.
Not a member of council.
Yeah.
Okay. And just to save a whole bunch of amendments, did you consider perhaps somebody from LPS to sit on this? With the environmental...
Fine with me.
If you don't add that to your, to your motion.
16 people, fine. One, one other person that...
Yeah, and I think it puts that environmental lens, and I've seen, I saw an email requesting that, you know, with tree bylaws, and they also have the environmental lens on there. So a member from LPS be added.
One other group, if I could, just while we're interacting, is the rural community. We can't forget the rural community, and this was brought up to me by somebody from outside. Why are the rural community, we've got six communities, but we also have a rural community that covers a fair swath of the geography, so if...
Want to add that to LPS?
That makes 17 then.
Okay.
One member of LPS, from a LPS delegate, plus a member of the rural community.
Okay. So move. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Qualley, and let's see, the list is already started. Counsel Richter.
Okay. You know, on the one hand, we don't want to talk about the tree bylaw because it's so important and it's going to take a lot of staff time, but on the other hand, we're going to throw together a community input task force that is going to be political and partisan because it will be populated by friends and insiders of a certain portion, a majority portion, on this council. This is so destructive, so despicable. I mean, just even look at it, you, six communities. We have 11 communities in Langley. What about Willowbrook, Langley Meadows, Glen Valley, Salmon River Uplands, South Langley, Gloucester? All these areas are missing. And then, you know, these community associations have started up because they're not happy with this council. Do you think this is going to make them happy with the council? I think this is just going to infuriate them. It's a stupid motion, and I'm not supporting it.
Point of order. It's a motion, Counsel Richter. There's a lot of motions that come in this floor that other members of council may think are stupid, but I think you should keep this respectful, and your opinion is certainly respected, but keep the words respectful. Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Well, I guess I'll coach my language and try and be respectful, which I generally am, although do get heated from time to time. I won't be supporting this. I think that from what we've seen so far is there is a robust enthusiasm for a number of community groups who are now coming forward. These are in addition to ones that we have historically had and been active and been giving us feedback on different propositions in the township. So I guess I would question the degree to which we need another layer of information, and what does that mean with respect? I think we had this discussion somewhat earlier about the fact, well, which community group shall we listen to? So in this case, would we listen to the pre-vetted ones where we've sort of cherry-picked the individuals who are going to be on it, as opposed to maybe a different community view from members who I think could be equally legitimate in their opinion? You know, the challenge of looking at anybody who's supposed to be nonpartisan, I just find that impossible. Anybody who's got an opinion in one way or another has to be partisan, no matter how you look at it, and unless they've been living under a rock, I'm sure that many of them have strong or maybe not so strong opinions as to what they think, especially in an election year. So I just don't really support the idea that we are somehow able to kind of artificially create, even if it's with the best of intentions, a group that we feel comfortable as a council that, you know, they're going to get together and they're going to come back with, you know, ideas or recommendations, and that will be what we're listening to. And most particularly, I think that in election year in particular, this is democracy. This is the way that we are going to get the most expansive public discussion and dialogue, and I don't see any reason personally whatsoever that we should constrain it in any way by having, as I've suggested, another layer around that. I'm, I'm perfectly content myself to listen to grassroots groups, whoever wants to come forward. I think that's our job. I'm a conduit to what the community has to say, and I don't think personally that this would be helpful.
Counsel Davis.
Yeah, I just have, just a question to the mover. What is the intent of this motion, considering we already have community associations in place? And I have some comments. I just...
I'll answer your question when I get a chance to speak.
So when he's, when he gets on the speaker's list, he'll answer.
Okay. Okay. Another thing I have, this is a large group. Why only one from Ag? And I guess the rule, the, I also had, where's the environment, but if LPS is on there. It's a, it's a large group. Would you meet once a month? And would there be enough time to be able to have everybody represent themselves? And I'm concerned about council picking the, picking out of the community because, I mean, you know, even the Brookswood crew had their differences between, between them. I think it's, it's, it's our job to, to answer residents and their emails and phone calls, and I'm just wondering if this committee would minimize, would this minimize delegations? And I, remember, this is the people's hall. They like, people want to come up there, and they want to, they want it questions, and when you put one person, I know personally, myself, if I, there's, I, maybe not, maybe I shouldn't joke, but if I was picking, I'd keep every muffered off the, off the list and, and what's, oh, okay. I'm, no, okay.
That'll cost you. You've got to be respectful.
But I, I'm concerned that this is, maybe this could be an attempt. I understand that everyone would get together and they would hash it out, and then one person would step forward. I understand that part, but I, I'm concerned that, I'm just concerned that it's, it's, we need to keep that delegation open because not everybody can go to a meeting once a month and listen because it gets so diluted. When you get it from the person that comes right from your community on that mic, boom, it's there, and that's, I'm worried about diluting it. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fox.
Well, thank you, your worship. Whoa, that was quite an introduction. I didn't quite get the chance to jump in to speak first. But I'm going to start by saying thank you to Mrs. Cask. Mrs. Cask, actually, from the Olago Community Association phoned me and said, Charlie, I need to sit down with you and talk this through. Could I, could we do that? So we met for about an hour and a half on Saturday, and I talked it through with her. So there is a bit of a genesis to this motion, although some people obviously don't like that genesis, but I guess, I guess there's a couple of things. Number one, I'm going to say that on Thursday night of this past week, I went to a very interesting presentation on the social sustainability dialogue, and I want to just pull out some of the words that are, that, some of the professionals, and this is Francis Bula, this isn't, this is Professor Haddon from SFU. We're talking high-level people. Local government has to take the role in convening. That's what has to happen. Those are their words, not mine. Intersectoral, never heard of the word before, certainly not in my Scrabble game. Intersectoral discussions need to... Intersectoral discussions need to happen. Groups can't operate in silos. Their words, not mine. You need to initiate dialogues and listen. Their words, not mine. Dialogues, dialogues happen around a table. To have a collective impact, you have to engage groups of different people to develop social sustainability. That's what I heard Thursday night. My intent in this is to actually get people engaged. It's actually to get people sitting down and talking. I talked, as I said, with Mrs. Cask for about an hour and fifteen minutes. We cover a lot of things, but this was obviously the most important thing. What drew me to this more than anything was the fact that in the last two weeks, and I, I referred directly to Mrs. Cask, she sent an email to us about sidewalks and concerns in, in Aldergrove. That was sent to staff, staff responded, it took some staff members' time to respond and put that response together. We got a letter from Mr. Zeller, Peter Zeller, asking us to partner on developing baseball fields in, at LSS. Am I correct? Yeah. So we're getting these groups coming to my table saying, I'd like money, I'd like to do this, this particular project, and they, they come all the time. We are the arbiters of the, of that. We are then become the arbiters. We take this to a planning session, and we put our things on the board, and we become the arbiters. My point is, we need to engage the, the public and get them to be the arbiters of what take, what, what are their issues. And so we have the business people talking to the community associations, talking to the sports people, talking to the rural people. So we get a sense of it. And everybody's not working in a silo. It does not deter anybody from coming and saying, help me, I need some support. The issue of timing, timing is critically important. And I talked to Mrs. Cask about a delegate who emailed me, actually emailed all of us, and I was the only one that responded, and I actually saw him at the Vancouver Giants game the other day. He came here, and he talked about Twenty Fourth Avenue. When I emailed back, he said, can you give me some advice? I gave him advice. He came here, he asked for $400,000 to get Twenty Fourth Avenue repaved. He came on November the sixth. What a perfect timing. You know what? He didn't get 400,000, he got 300,000 in Twenty Fourth Avenue's time. He wasn't a member of a community association, he was a one-person delegation. Backcountry horsemen came and said, we'd like $100,000 to partner to finish off the trail, Two Sixty Fourth to Two Seventy Second. Perfect timing. The perfect timing is when we are discussing things and prioritizing things. It comes to us at the time, the right time. It's now we should be starting to talk and formalizing and get, encouraging these people through discussion and engaging them in convening this and getting the intersectoral discussions going for what are your, what are your, what do you see? And so if, if, let's say the Brookswood Community Association comes and they've got an isolated scenario, okay, fine, we can put that there. But let's say Willoughby comes, and we had this the other day, they have sidewalk issues, and Aldergrove's got sidewalk issues, and Wallic Grove's got sidewalk issues. All of a sudden, we say, you know what? Our sidewalk budget is X. Not very much, I think it's $75,000. But you know what? This year, we need to focus on sidewalks. So let's, let's up that to $300,000. We make that as a council decision and say sidewalks are a priority because we heard it from the people. Not because we made it a priority. We have to find out where the, the, the 200 and whatever, $75,000, $225,000 difference is coming from. That's our job. But it's the people that told us that. Maybe next year, it's traffic calming. There's how many, over a hundred? Over a hundred? Traffic calming requests?
Hundred, yes.
Sorry?
That is correct, yes, over a hundred currently.
So maybe, maybe the Willoughby Residents Association, we see we've got serious traffic calming issues and, and other community associations and business associations say, so maybe we up that. We don't do three a year, we do fifteen next year. Prioritize fifteen. So the whole point is here, we were encouraged on Thursday night, several of us were there, some weren't, didn't hear that message, didn't hear the word in, in, intersectoral discussions, didn't hear about working in silos versus working in engaged environments, didn't hear those words. So what I'm trying to do is put that to work. Our staff was there, our staff put it on. And that's what they, as part of the social sustainability network that we're trying to develop and, and produce in our community.
Can just wrap up.
So as much as it may to some people sound in a rather derogatory fashion and, and be dysfunctional, it's my attempt to say, let's get together and engage, and let's have outcomes.
Council Whitmarsh.
Thank you. This is, to me, a, a, a good approach to trying to bring people together from all different facets of our community. When we were elected, we were elected to represent all of the township of Langley, not just a specific community or a special interest group, to represent everybody. And the community, community associations have, some have been around for a long time, some have been more recently formed. I was certainly under the impression that they were trying to do things to improve the community, that they weren't just formed because they're unhappy with council, but they were actually formed to do good things and make good decisions for the community. That was my understanding. And yet, it's difficult to bring all members of every single association together. So this is a way to bring people from those associations, to hear from the voice of those people there. It could be the leader of that group, it might be somebody else who represents the community association. Bring them together and put on their Township of Langley hat, rather than their Willoughby hat, or their Fort Langley hat, or their Aldergrove hat, but to put on the hat of the Township of Langley and think as a collective group, what is the best thing for us in the Township of Langley? So this is an, an attempt to bring good discussion and bring people together. And I think council has a responsibility to bring the community together, and that's exactly what this does. This brings in a large number of people who are representative others in the community. We did a similar thing with the, the planning team for the Brookswood area. I thought that went very well and came up with a very good plan for Brookswood, all community engaged and engagement, and we're doing, suggesting in this motion a similar kind of thing. So I certainly support this. I think it's great that we are wanting to have discussions with members of council. I, I think it's great that we want to include those community associations for the betterment of the community as a whole, and to put on that helmet of the Township of Langley representing that group and see what we can do for everybody in the community. That's the responsibility of council, and it will be a task this group has to put together. And I think it makes sense that we put this forward to the 2019 budget as well. I think it's a great motion, I certainly will support it.
Thank you. Council Qualley.
Thanks. I, I thank Council Fox for the motion. You know, I think this motion speaks to the delegation that was led by Barb Sharp a few weeks ago, where she brought all of the community groups together. What they were referring to is all of the community groups, the six of them, and those are the six that have actually formed the community groups that have, that are listed as actual societies that have been formed as standing, as official community groups. And so I think when I read this, that's what I assumed that number came from, is the actual groups that were presented to us. You know, I think this motion by adding the other community groups adds a layer of input that, that Barb Sharp didn't necessarily ask for, but it expands the boundaries. And I think getting input from people, and it could be somebody from the community association, one of the community associations that is the sport person, or that is the, the person from the rural community. There's lots of places where these people can come from that will sit on this committee, but I don't think council has the opportunity to cherry pick the committee. Council will choose the committee, but people will have to apply and meet that criteria. So only a member of the community association would be able to fill that seat. So this isn't about cherry picking committees. And council has a good history of putting together really effective committees like they did at the Brookswood Community Plan. There's another one coming tonight, that is the Social Sustainability Committee, or Task Force, rather, that's being assembled. So I think, you know, we have to be mindful that the people in the Residents Association aren't the only people with opinions about our community. There's lots of other people that would like to have input. So I think this is a really good start, and I think if we have, like Council Fox said, a group of people sitting around, I think we'll all learn some things. And I think having staff there to help facilitate the conversation, I think, is going to be really meaningful, especially for people who may be confused even about what our abilities are as a municipality. People think that things are the municipality's responsibility, that the municipality has no control over. So having that level of clarity in these kinds of meetings, I think, is going to be really important, too. So I am going to support this because I think it's a really good place to start, and I think it addresses the, the request from the community groups to bring people together. And I think it's not so exclusive that it's only the community groups that get council's ear, but that council's expanded their reach and really wants to hear from the whole community. So I am going to support the motion, and I thank Council Fox for spending the time, and I don't think it's a stupid motion at all.
Thank you. Council Spurrell.
Thank you. I agree with the points that have been said. I attended the seminar workshop, social sustainability event, as Council Fox did, and I, and I really took a lot from it as well, the comments that, that he brought up about working together and, and sort of our role in facilitating the community to be engaged. And, you know, I think this is just another layer, and I say that in, in a positive. I think this is a, a positive thing, that it is another opportunity, another layer for the public to engage. I think this has been a, a goal of councils to, to look at ways, better ways of reaching out to the public and providing opportunities for them to, to give us feedback and, and to give us information. And I think, you know, I think it's really disappointing that a member of council would think engaging the public is a stupid idea. I think that really, you know, this is what we're here for, is to hear from the public, and this is not replacing, you know, the opportunity for anyone to come and give us a delegation or send us information. This is just providing another input opportunity and another option for them, and I think that we should be welcoming it as opposed to calling it names, so I support it.
Thank you. Council Long.
Community associations want autonomy. They're put together by members of the community, and they want to have an autonomous agenda. It's not for us to try and, and get involved. That's, that's just not where we belong. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. The, I, I do, I do want to say, I've heard a lot of great comments here, that we respect the community associations, and this is where it's come from. I think having, asking community associations to, to provide a representation to something like this for council is, is not a bad thing. We still want to encourage community associations to continue working. I mean, they're, they're providing a valuable service. People like Council Whitmarsh said, they're there to help the community. You know, I've gone to, gone to those meetings, and they're listening about block watch, they're listening about issues in their neighborhood, and they want to, they're looking for solutions. This isn't replacing them. This is just an ability to reach out, and I know we can't have 2,000 people on a committee, but there's certainly ways that these can be facilitated to get good information. And council will be, council does need to appoint them, but they'll be appointed from people who actually apply, and hopefully the community associations will embrace this and want to have representation here to help us move forward. So hopefully that addresses some of the concerns. Council Richter.
Yeah. Mr. Backin, it says here that Councilor Fox prevented, presented the following notices of motion within the deadlines according to council policy. So when did he have to submit, or when did he submit this notice motion?
Your Worship, prior to Wednesday noon.
Prior to Wednesday noon. Yet, according to what he's just said, he based it all on a meeting he attended Thursday night. I, I'm not quite following.
Council Fox gets to speak after you, so he can address that.
Okay. The other thing that I, I want to note here is, it doesn't say in paragraph one that it is the community groups that already exist, whose members will be selected. And in fact, it kind of goes out of its way to confirm that whoever gets on this task force will not be engaged actively, proactively, either as a candidate or a special interest group. They are de facto special interest groups because they're representing their communities. So, you know, let's not dress this up as a silk purse. What this is, is a sanitized way to engage the public. We're going to talk to them, but we will talk to them on our terms. And the other thing that maybe the public doesn't understand is when people get put on these committees, we all get a vote, and the majority vote decides who goes on the committee. Well, let's just take a look at the voting record of this council, and I think you're going to see whose friends get on this committee. So I'm not supporting.
Okay, I would, I would like to point out, thank you, Council Richter, for that information. I'd like to point out that for the public's information, when we do come to a point where we need to appoint people to committees, it's done enclosed because we're dealing with personnel, and it's done by secret ballot. There is no show of hands, it's a secret ballot to protect, protect the vote. So just to be clear.
And there's no pre-discussion that ever goes on.
Excuse me, I have, that's, I have the floor, Council Richter, and I'd ask you not to interrupt. I'm trying to explain to the public that it's, it's secret ballot, and, and that council has an opportunity to vote. And I've seen in all my time, when we've selected all of our committee members, a variety of people come on, and it's, and I really take offense that you say this is fixed or rigged in some way. This whole council votes, we're all independent, there are no political parties here, we're independent, we all run on independence, and I take offense to that, and I believe that we are doing the best job we possibly can to include the, the committee. And furthermore, I find it extremely difficult to understand why members of council fight public engagement. I put on a public engagement task force to come up with a charter, and I mentioned earlier, that's a legacy. It was fought tooth and nail by some members of council or a certain member of council, and it produced fantastic results. And here we are fighting about this again. This is an attempt to include the community, and I want to encourage that the residential associations submit names, because we want to include the community. We can't include everybody, but if it's properly facilitated, we can get some great information to help move this council, move this municipality and this township forward. Council Fox.
Well, I guess I've really struck a nerve today. I'm sitting in a wonderful spot at this table. I, I've never sensed such negativity. My name's Charlie Fox, I'm a council member, and obviously some of my council members just significantly dislike me in any motion I put forward.
Okay, let's just keep to the motion.
This was a motion, this was a motion that I derived over a ten-day period. I submitted it actually on Monday or Tuesday. I went to a session on Thursday. It validated absolutely everything I tried to embody in this motion. I've brought that up in my comments. It's unfortunate that, Council Richter, you weren't there to hear the learned scholars put forward the.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
The information that was there.
Counselor.
Come on.
Counselor, Counselor Richter.
You allow personal attacks on me all the time from members of this council.
Counselor Richter, you called the point of order, allowed me to rule.
You need to stop that.
Counselor Richter, you called the point of order, allowed me to rule.
You need to stop it. You need to apply the same rules to everybody.
Counselor Richter, would you please calm down? You've asked for a point of order, and I need to rule, and if you keep talking over me, I cannot rule. Council Fox, keep your comments to the motion, please. Thank you very much. I've not ruled.
Right, well, I, I think it's tough to keep your comments to the motion when you've had it, had it.
Keep it to the motion.
Being derogatorily analyzed. Anyway, you know what, folks? The bottom line is, do we want to engage the public and get them involved in this intersectoral discussion, or we don't? I don't care. I put this forward because I thought it was a good thing. I thought it was an engaging thing. I mean, if you don't want it, if you don't want public engagement, fine, move on.
Keep it to the motion.
But I think that my motion has, people are reading into my motion that there's a negative intent and all this. It's not. It's a constructive, it's coming from a constructive context. It's coming from an engagement context. Vote the way you want, call it what you want. I'm only trying to be a positive, move agenda forward based upon what we've seen come forward from the community associations and so on. I think it had, it could have an absolutely positive outcome.
Thank you. Council Davis.
Okay, got to be positive here. I, I, Mayor Fros, I was concerned when you said, why would we want to? I, Mayor Fros, I was concerned when you said, "Why would we want to keep this about public engagement?" Because I don't want to keep this away from the public. Oh, shit. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I was trying to turn it off. I'm concerned that, I was there on Thursday, and all those people probably put their pant legs on one at a time, Charlie. And they had a lot of good things to say. And the fellow that talked, I forget his name, David, one thing that he said was, "It all started when they started to talk." And I'm concerned that selecting, and I won't call it cherry picking, but I'm worried about selecting a few people and leaving it there. And from that point, like, there's so many other conversations, and I don't know how to get it to the table, but right now, we do bring it at the delegation stage, and...
Okay. Counsel, Counsel Davis has the floor.
Okay. So, because now, like, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about, like, the size, we've got it up to 17 now. And when we, when I sit at my committee meeting, you know, we, it takes, there's a, how do you go through the information that comes from just a certain people? You know, as soon as we saw the community members come the other last meeting, and they were all there, I thought, oh, man, everyone's, you know, this is, you've got, this is it, right? So, I'm thinking that, I guess, our job is to filter out what the community wants. And that means that by making a committee, we're, I'm worried that we're going to reduce the availability of the people to come and talk. That's what I'm concerned about, to express their opinions.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Arneson.
Oh, thank you, worship. You know, I just, it's disappointing, some of the, I guess, the personal nature of some of the comments when we're talking about a policy issue and something that's so important. And I'm, you know, wanting to put forward my perspective because I think that there has been this sense that anybody who went to that meeting where there was a group of panelists talking about, you know, having a socially sustainable community would have the same perspective. I just am here to say, that's not my perspective. I think it all depends on the lens that you went there with. So, from my perspective, we never talk about these things on council because it's not the nature of, excuse me?
I'm listening.
So, we're listening.
No, actually, I'm not almost done. I have 10 minutes to talk.
I didn't ask you to finish.
Okay. Please, just carry on. Sorry. I apologize. We were going over something here that was important, but not as important as your speech. Thank you.
I do feel that I have a role to play, and I'm trying to bring forward a perspective. So, actually, I was fortunate enough to be able to go and hear a secondary presentation from the person who is in charge of that department in Revelstoke. And what I got from her was not this sense of the sort of abstract notions of what we needed to do about it, but it was more about the grassroots perspective of how communities, especially her community, which was a very small community, the extraordinary things that they were able to do just because of the initiative that was taken by some individuals, which then generated, it was the nexus of something bigger happening. So, I'm not really a fan of this idea, just to form yet another committee. Please don't write in and say, "Arneson is against engagement." That is not the case, and it's not what I'm saying. There is, all engagement to me is not equal. And therefore, I would like to distinguish between what I feel is very organic engagement that we currently have. This is not to say that I'm against this, you know, why not hear from more people? But I really don't want to hear in yet another organized fashion from a group of individuals that I could have already heard from. And if they're just representatives of the community groups already, if that's the case, then I don't know why we wouldn't consider that to be redundant. So, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley.
Yeah. I mean, I was also at the sustainability event on Thursday night, and I did take away some things. But the biggest takeaway for me from that was that engagement doesn't have to be perfect, and this will likely be far from perfect. This isn't permanent. This is three meetings. This is, the most important thing I took away from Thursday was start somewhere. And that's what we're doing. We're starting somewhere. I didn't see anybody else put in a notice of motion to create some sort of dialogue and sort of expand on the information that delegates have asked for recently. This isn't going to be perfect, and this isn't permanent, but it's a start. And this will be the springboard for lots of other discussion. And this will absolutely not stop people from coming to delegate to council in these chambers. This, that's what we're here for, to hear from people. And so, this is not in any way intended, I believe, to hinder the discussion from people. And believe me, in the next six months, that delegation list is going to be full to the max, every single meeting, I'm sure of it. So, I mean, yeah, those are the things that I took away from Thursday. It doesn't have to be perfect. It's not going to be permanent because the discussion, like Counsel Arneson says, has to be organic and evolving. But if you don't start somewhere, then you have nothing. And right now, we have nothing. So, I am going to support the motion because I think this is a good start that could springboard into lots of other places.
Thank you. Counsel Sperrill.
Yeah. Counsel Qualley just echoed exactly what my thoughts were. I think we have to start somewhere. I think we've all maybe lost sight of what we're talking about here. We're providing an opportunity for members of our community from different associations, from different backgrounds, from different thought process to come together and to have a discussion and to share ideas and to, like Counsel Whitmarsh says, look at it from a perspective of a whole community as opposed to maybe this, their one individual perspective and to have, and to facilitate a discussion. I don't understand how anybody on this council could sit here and say that we don't want that, that it's stupid, and that it's not a good idea. What are we doing here? Like, this, I'm at a loss for the opposition in this. I don't see it. I don't understand it, other than for maybe other reasons that are not on topic and not on the issue. I think we all need to take a step back, think about what we're actually facilitating, what we're trying to create here, and take the games and the politics out of it.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
There's nothing that's been said that would indicate that delegates or delegations cannot come to council. There's nothing that's been said that says you can no longer have coffee meetings with members of the community, that you can't respond to emails. There's none of that. All of those things will continue. All of the grassroots conversations that we've been talking about that are so important will continue to happen. There's nothing that says that community associations cannot continue to meet and talk about their communities and how important their community of Brookswood, Fernridge might be, or how important Aldergrove might be. There's nothing that says that won't happen. There's nothing that prevents a council member from attending those meetings and being part of those discussions with community associations or meeting with LEPs, or meeting with the recreation community, or meeting with the business group. There's nothing that stops grassroots input. All of that will continue. This is the opportunity to bring people together, to talk about the community as a whole, to talk about Langley, and to develop, to bring those interests that you have from the various communities and bring them together and talk, "How do we make Langley better?" And I don't understand how people could be opposed to additional conversations about making Langley better. This is a great motion. It's not, this is a grassroots motion, and it ties in with all of the grassroots things that every member in this council is already doing. And so, I think this is great. We should continue on, and we should pass this motion.
Thank you. Has anybody not spoken twice? I think we'll call a question now. Thank you. And the motion carries. Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. Is there any other business? Counsel Richter?
Yes. And the items distributed to us, I think it was today, yes. Item number 19 on page 49 refers, is from a gentleman who's using compostable bags in his compost, I guess in his green bin, but his, it wasn't accepted. And so, he's asking why it's, he understands that, why plastics wouldn't be accepted, but compostable bags that are bought specifically for house food scraps, they should be accepted. So, could we look into that?
Yeah. So, it's already been forwarded to Engineering Division, and someone will get back to him. And Mr. Seffi, I believe we've had this discussion before about certain types of bags that, and has been brought to residents' attention, that those types of bags are not accepted, even though they say compostable. But I know there's a whole long reason for it. Maybe you can help out or provide some information later.
Thank you, worship. The staff has been made, this has been referred to staff to follow up with the resident as well as the contractor.
Thank you. Look into that. Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm afraid to speak. I don't know what the reaction's going to be here.
Just speak.
But, you know, I did, I did indicate that I had a meeting with Mrs. Cask, and I wanted to just thank staff for item number 11 on the March 15th, where staff responded to her with her concerns related to Aldergrove traffic improvements, and she was appreciative of that fact, that she is now knowledgeable about that, and that's a part of the big picture. So, thank you.
Is there any other business? Is any other motion terminated?
Terminated.
Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Whitmarsh.